Good evening, we'll open up the personnel workshop. And we're going to go to item number three on the agenda this evening. Personal contracts discussion and review. And the first one we're going to discuss this evening is the Registered Behavior Technician, RVT contract template. And I'm going to have Jennifer Piercy walk you through that template.
All right, so we are presenting the, a new contract for our registered behavior technicians that will go into effect for any new hires that we hire. We are changing this contract to a one-year contract. Originally, we did a three-year contract for them. So the current employees are good for the next two more years. But any future new hire under this position, we are going to change it to a one-year contract. So the changes basically are to change it obviously to a one-year. We are keeping the base rate at $25 per hour for that first year. We are adding the section four in regards to a probationary period of 90 working days. Under the section five for duties, we wanted to include the BCBA to work under, direction of, and not just the special education teacher, as they do report directly to the BCBA's as they supervise them. In section nine, the next change is just a wording change in section B, which is up to 12 sick days, because obviously if they start later in the year, they won't get a full 12 sick days in the full year. In section C of, of item nine, we added the word resignation for a reason for not receiving any payout of sick personal or vacation leave. The next change is in regards to section 12. This originally was tuition reimbursement, and we had paid for their certification and came up with a reimbursement schedule so that, to guarantee them to stay for the, to make it worth us paying for that reimburse, for that tuition. However, we are, are changing that. We are still going to cover the certification training if they need it. However, we are not going to try to lock them in now that we're changing this to a one-year contract. The cost of the training is only $150, so it's not a significant cost to us as a district. And we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we keep this till one year in case there's any issues or anything with, with the staff. So you'll see that section C is all crossed off in regards to the reimbursement for the training program. And that is all of the changes for that contract. Any questions?
Okay. She may be.
That's right. We skipped over executive session and went straight to the other contracts, just to... I'll let you guys get settled, and then I'll move on to the next one.
Are we going on to the OOT?
Yes, the occupational therapist. So we have two contracts tonight to present. The first one is for Ms. Denise Butt. She has been with us for a couple of years now. So this is a renewal of her contract. We are just changing the, the years to represent the next three years. She is getting a 3% increase for each of the three years, as listed there. And her wages will be paid over, over a full year from September to August. I was just clarifying that, because she's a 10-month employee. So we don't want to pay, start paying her in July before she even actually works in the fiscal year.
I know it's probably, you know, are they allowed to do the, decide what, how they want their payments over 10 months, the OT, or is it, if the teachers can?
So, yeah, the, the teachers have two options. It's either over the full year, or it's, they get a lump sum payment. So on the 21st pay, they get all five, the last five summer pays in one. We do not give that to any other person. It's only to the teachers.
Okay. So, but there's only these four classes of 10 months, and then they, or they're not getting some summers?
So, no, this, this person will get paid full year, full 12 months from Septem-
Okay.
But it's, it's going to start September 1 and end August 31st, so she's getting paid behind instead of ahead.
Okay.
So, because if she decides to leave us before school starts, and then we've already paid her four paychecks before. So we're just moving that over. She is actually, I believe, the last one of the 10-month employees that were shifting that language. Under fringe benefit section, as we have been doing with all of our contracts, is changing it to an accrual basis for earning sick time. So she'll still get the same 15 sick days within a year, but she'll be getting them in 1.25 increments per month. Added the standard jury duty language, so that if she is called for jury duty, that she'll get paid in full for her service that she has to do. In section E, we moved the first HSA deposit to September, because again, she doesn't start until September, so we don't want to give her half of a, of HSA credit before she even begins for the year. And...
Is that being a bit fast, right?
We are also incrementing in half percentages for the three years, so 20 and a half for the, for the insurance cost share for 25, 26, then 21, and then 21 and a half. Item number F, we are changing to the Essential Choice Dental Plan. Again, this is pretty standard that we're doing across all of our contracts. It's a newer updated dental plan for our, our staff, and we wanted to move them along to it. And that is all the changes for Ms. Butt. The, any questions? The other occupational therapist contract is for Ms. Tineson. She was employed, this was her first year this school year, and now we are extending her for another three years. So we're changing this to a three-year contract, again, giving her a 3% increase over those three years. Her contract was pretty new, so there wasn't a lot of changes I needed to make in it. Her language, for some reason, said that her age, her insurance was under the current teacher's contract. However, she has the insurance that's under all our personal contracts, so I just updated that language to reflect the correct insurance that she has. Her cost share, again, is going to be half, half percent increments of 20.5, 21, and And that is really all the changes for her contract, because since we just did her contract last year, it was pretty current and up to date. Any questions on that one? All right, and the final personal contract that we are presenting to the board tonight for approval is for Ms. G-Sig. She is our newer board certified behavior analyst that we hired. Again, the 24, 25 year was her first year. We are renewing her contract for a three-year contract for 25 to 28. Again, a 3% increase for each of the three years. And a half percent increase for the insurance cost share, 20 and a half, 21, and 21 and a half. And those are the only changes, because again, her contract was very new, and not a lot of updates needed to be done on it. Any questions? Perfect. All right, so we can go into executive session then? Very good.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call attendance, please.
I'm on it. Just if you could just give me a second. My computer went to sleep. Ms. DePalma?
Yes, I mean here.
Ms. Delongo?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Putney?
Here.
Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Stacy?
Here.
Ms. Torello?
Here.
Dr. DeLucia?
Here.
All present.
Okay, that brings us to Chairman of the Board of Pr- I just want to thank each of you that were able to get here to get their glamour shots done for tonight. Tom, next week, next meeting, we're gonna have a sketch artist sitting in the audience that you will not be able to know. Um, either that or we're doing the stick figures for your bio.
We get an AI now. They'll just print one up.
And I also want to remind each of you to look towards those end of the year calendars. A lot of exciting things coming up. Concerts, art show, the district art show is always a great event. And that is the twenty-
Eight.
Twenty eighth. It's gonna be a good time. Okay.
If there's a link in my Board of Ed update, in the very first section at the bottom, that will take you to a sheet that continually gets updated and changed as revisions, additions, and everything comes in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so I am going to ask, do we have any public correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay. Standing committee reports. Personnel?
We have some contract stuff that we put forward tonight. And, um, I think that's it really for now.
Okay. Jack?
Athletics, all of the teams are, you know, buying down, trying to make states and, um, middle of the season. Good luck to all of them. Hope they are all in their state tournaments.
The policy, I believe we just have a new policy that will be brought to the board this evening on restorative practice. Other than that, I think that's all updates. Superintendent's report.
Um, are you going to the COFO report?
Oh, the COFO report first, yes.
Okay.
So before we have questions over purchase orders or invoices. Okay. We'll hop into the budget projection. Uh, just not taking the big picture. I wanted to pause and remind you like this at the same time, this was at last, the same time we presented it to you last year. Just so you can see where we were landing, um, as we approached the final month of school. Um, very similar to ours as last year. Um, you'll see there's two main drivers that we will discuss, which we are all very aware of. The employee's benefit, employee's benefit, our personal services plus our special headline, um, with the large O overages. But some items to consider is there is still a lot of things that we get from now to the end of the year that will offset almost all, except medical and some special, um, the largest one being our excess cost. We receive our second payment at the end of May and based on the state's voting, um, the excess costs, there's second, um, funding coming through. That once approved, they should be sending payments out like in June that will offset that, that line. Um, our medical claims right now is based on a current projection that we received for the year. Um, I do have a strong feeling that that number may not come to fruition. It may be a lot less. Our last report we've gotten from Boston, um, and Brown and Brown has indicated that they feel that our end of the year may be around half a million dollars better than they were anticipating, which may cause that, may cause this number to go, to go down. Um, and it does not, this does not consider other items that we have had for years and years past, such our Medicaid account, our rental account, to offset the debt deficit. So I do believe we will be overspent, which was our expectation. We have notified the town earlier in the year, in January, um, when we started the budget process with my organic team. So they're aware. We have been strategizing on how to build a whole 20-year period of funds. Um, we will have a meeting with them in the next week or two and have further discussions as we get closer to that timeframe. Um, but I wanted to give you an idea of where we stand now before the last push comes through and we will report back and bring a final budget transfer in June. Once those items come in, we can move money around where we need to.
We really won't have the budget balance completely till October, right?
Yeah, so all the outstanding bills that come through, um, come through over the summer, towards the June month. So yes, normally September, October timeframe is when we get a good timeframe of that. So it gives us some time. Basically, it's gonna be a cash flow issue more than a reporting issue. We just need to make sure we have enough cash at all times to pay bills when they're coming through. Um, having this question of extending due summers, which will leave a little room there. Um, it's just a matter of how the team will decide to report and strategize on how cash flow will work.
We already budgeted for everything that we expect to come in over the summer, right?
Right. That's all factored in here. The main, the main drivers are that the special health insurance were always funded through the medical insurance reserve. And only receiving the $200,000 last year is not allowed. Have the increase in those two lines. That's why you're saving the large gap in those areas. Um, on the plus side, this budget coming forward allowed us to actually budget the correct amount of dollars in each line. So these figures here, although bad for this current year, are enlightening for next year because we are in line with what our projections were. It should be, we're in a better spot in the next fiscal year. So it's just a matter of getting through this one year.
Archie, what is our rental account at right now?
One fifty right now. We are actively getting into the, into the season. So from now on over the summer, we can wait a lot of the rental. We are booked at most every week weekend, most weekdays as well.
So pretty tapped out.
It'll increase significantly over the next couple of months though.
I just know we've relied on it to kind of bump our other areas a lot, so.
So the main purpose of that account is to obviously put back into the auditorium like we did with JMS. Um, our next initiative would be to get here at the high school for the same dollar value. Um, last year we completed that account to help the cause. Last year we'll have to do the same as current year. Um, but along the lines, any net, any necessary things that come up that break, you'll need to repair. We are handling those like we did at the last meeting to make sure our auditorium is still state of the art with your vision.
So is that balance reflect what we approved last? Okay. Any other questions? No? Does that conclude your report?
Me? Alright, great. This is, this is.
Unless, do you want the assistant superintendents to go first?
Um, sure. You wanna go first?
Sure.
Alright. We're just jumping all around today.
We are.
Um, so Adam and I have a couple of small informational items that we wanted to share and then we're gonna, um, take a walk outside and see our new greenhouse. Um, but one update we wanted to provide was that we had about thirty-two students this past month take the Seal of Bilinguality exam. Um, we had twenty-three students who will be receiving the Seal of Bilinguality cord at graduation this year. So ten of those were seniors that passed last year. Um, no, juniors that passed last year plus ten seniors that took it this year. And we had nineteen additional juniors, um, pass the Seal of Bilinguality exam. They'll receive their scores tomorrow. So next year, that sets us up to kind of have the highest number that we've had so far. Um, and we had students take the exam in Spanish and in Turkish. We had two students take it in Turkish. Um, and the students were very excited for the opportunity and, um, yeah, we had an excellent pass rate, so.
Alright, and I wanted to share an update that in addition to our extended school year programming this summer, we are launching a more robust, um, summer program that'll be open to students. The priority placement is for students exiting kindergarten through third grade who are not yet reading at grade level. Um, so we've expanded the number of classrooms and we're building out that program to be five weeks. It'll extend students instructional focus, um, to bridge that, uh, gap between the end of the school year and coming back in. And while the primary focus is on that early literacy, uh, we are building the curriculum so that it is, uh, project-based learning that is an integrated experience bringing different subject areas together for students. Uh, we've been able to do this by, um, securing a number of competitive grant funds that are helping us to build an infrastructure that we'll be able to carry forward in the years to come. Uh, an exciting addition that we've had as well is that, uh, due to, um, our number of recently arrived multilingual learners, uh, we were able to receive another competitive grant, um, to provide, uh, newcomer-specific programming to support students in helping to continue building up, uh, basic interpersonal communication skills that will, uh, build community, um, support, um, L1 and English literacy and, uh, get them in a, uh, supported place coming into the next school year. And that is bridging not just elementary, but, um, the intermediate, intermediate elementary grades and middle school as well. So we're excited for that. It'll be hosted at Tuttle this summer.
Quick question. So once these students are identified as not reading at the level, what's the process then to get them into that program?
So, um, it's an all-inclusive, so messaging will go out. Our E O Y testing with Dibbles, um, wraps up at the end of next week. And, um, families will be notified. They'll have an opportunity to signal back and then we'll program from there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great question.
Do I? I was just gonna say we are taking-
Oh, go ahead.
-a field trip, but are you guys finished with your report?
Yep.
So I know that Lisa had shared, um, a few weeks ago regarding receiving that greenhouse regret, grant through the School Based Health Alliance, uh, funding source. Well, it is officially complete and yesterday we got the, uh, the temporary certificate of occupancy. And so we thought it would be really great to accompany all the people who put in tons of hard work in making this happen and take a little field trip downstairs so you can see the space. And then after you sort of have a frame of reference for the space and what it's like, we have some individuals here tonight, um, who are going to share with you, uh, how that space is going to be used and how the program is gonna be integrated across course, courses and departments. So I think Rob's actually following us and gonna take some live footage as we head down there, uh, and visit the space. Did you wanna add anything?
No.
Alright, let's go.
A little bit of the background about our greenhouse and garden project downstairs. But, um, now we're gonna give you a little bit more of a, a more detailed overview of what has been going on and what our chefs are hoping is going to continue. So these are our East Haven High School culinary chefs, um, Heather and John Profetto. Um, they have been culture changers here at the high school, um, not just in the kitchen and in their program, but really getting involved in so many other things here at the high school. Um, so they're gonna tell you a little bit about their program. And then we're gonna invite Chrissy Adanti Peterson to talk a little bit about the Transition Academy program. She's got some of her students with her tonight who are gonna talk to us a little bit about the integration of this program into their program.
Is that working? I'm good. Okay. Um, I use my mom voice or my teacher voice. So we're just gonna, uh, a little bit give you an overview now that you've seen the space down there. We're gonna talk about the vision for that space, some projects that are happening in that space.
the kids outside to work on this. So, a lot of students came together to make this happen. Some of these photos, you'll see how raw and how bare the ground was. This playscape was left over from the daycare center that they had here. It really wasn't safe for anybody to play on. And when we asked for permission to get the garden, I'm sure this group was like, "Yeah, you can have a garden," and they thought that that's where it was going to end. But the whole time, John and I had our eyes set on that space over there for the greenhouse. So, we're like, oh, we're just going to get a little bit and then we're going to get a little bit more and then we're going to get a little bit more. So, we just kept inch by inch, kind of like taking over space. And the reason we wanted to do it was because we're always here talking about our vision of the graduate. We're talking about teamwork and communication and real-world application and life skills and things that you can't Google. You cannot Google the learning targets that these students benefited from by going outside and actually loading up the wheelbarrow and building the garden boxes and looking at a space that was barren and just kind of being like, "We're going to what? Huh?" And then all of a sudden, it's filled up with dirt and then there's garden paths and then we have mulch that's put down and then we have stonework that's down there and then we put seeds in it and then it's growing. And then when the students came back in the fall and saw what had happened to this like blank space and actually got out there and tasted basil and tried cucumbers and had food that, it didn't come from the grocery store. It came from their hard work. I think it was really rewarding for them. I remember two girls having cucumbers and remarking on how fresh those cucumbers tasted and they'd never had anything that came from an actual garden. So, that was kind of a... All right. So, woodworking and manufacturing kind of talked a little bit about what their students do out there. They did blueprints. They did design. They measured spaces. They talked about cornering and locations. But what they talked about most was that a lot of times, these students who are in their departments are going to go into jobs that are outdoor, physical labor jobs. But they don't think, "Well, when I'm doing the roofing or when I'm doing the carpentry or when I'm doing the electrical and the plumbing on new construction, I'm going to be out there and it's going to be 100 degrees and it's going to be really hot and really humid." So, they talk about them getting a taste of what that's like to do hard manual labor. So, this was the beginning. We're always thinking about sustainability and how we can reuse and repurpose. We put underneath everything out there cardboard that we recycled from the culinary and from the cafeteria. We had to put up a tent because the students thought it was too hot and we're like, "You haven't seen it hot yet." But we got them all out there. They filled every single one of those. They laid all that mulch. They laid all that stonework. We put it together. What else do we have got here? So, interdisciplinary connections, I mentioned downstairs a little bit. This is not just a project for culinary. This greenhouse and this garden does not belong to just John and I. This belongs to the entire school. This belongs to the entire community. This belongs to student body that has left here, that is here now and that is coming. It's going to be here for a long time and a lot of students are going to benefit from this. And what do they get out of it? Well, we have an amazing connection with special education and Chrissy's going to talk about that. The opportunity for students to work together in a garden and in the kitchen. There's language arts. There's research. There's math. Students love doing math. And they get to do math and they don't know that they're doing math. We're talking about spacing. We're talking about depth. We're talking about how many and how much and yield and what we can do with it. And of course, there's science. And a lot of the projects that are coming down the pike now that people are talking about are using 3D printers and talking about weather, science. We're going to innovate some garden tools. There's been some great things on Instagram of putting together old pieces of garden tools to create new garden tools. They're going to build hummingbird perches. You saw the birdhouses that were out there. I've heard about wind chimes. I've heard about zen gardens. They built lighthouses out of flower pots. So, people are coming up with all these ideas now that are going to incorporate into these different areas. We've also connected with our clubs. Our environmental science club was instrumental last year in harvesting that garden and helping us put it bed for the winter. We made something like 50 quarts of pesto. It was pesto every day. We had pesto down in culinary and it was quite a project trying to harvest all that basil and turn it into that. We had our National Honor Society do a breakfast for our veterans. We had culinary go to the veterans' hall and serve a lasagna dinner. And we use a lot of the fresh herbs out of the garden for that dinner. When we did our fair in the fall, the health and science occupation took the pumpkins that we grew from the garden and they did like an anatomy of the pumpkin where little kids carved them open and reached inside and pulled out the guts and posa was part of that. And then woodworking did all the design and construction of our 14 beds we saw out there today. We made it on to Channel 8 News, what's right with schools. Yay, East Haven! There was something great going on here. Laura Hutchinson was amazing. She came down. She went out. She toured our garden. She did a great piece on us. If you missed it, I'm going to make this available for everybody. They can click on the link and check it out. I think we had a special education student as a star of that show, too. So, they came to check us out here. Our community, we could not have done this without a community, right? We reached out several times and we asked for whatever they wanted to give us. We asked for dirt. We asked for containers. We asked for shovels. We asked for umbrellas. We asked for tools. We asked for garbage cans. We asked for flowers. And we got everything that we asked for. We asked them to support our fair. They did that. We asked them to support our flower show, our flower sale. They did that. We have had nothing but help from the community and we have been embraced time and time again that John has gone to the internet to ask for someone to come either be a volunteer, to come help us, or to give us stuff. So, I would like to highlight that. We talked a little bit about the vision of the graduate, but here's a project where we can work that in on a daily basis. And then these were resources and inspiration, a lot of people that helped us along the way. There were places that we went to on summertime, on our time off. We worked with Yellow Farmhouse. There's a great place in Vermont. If you have nothing to do this summer, go take a course at King Arthur and go to this farm. That was my original inspiration for wanting to do this. I went there and students were doing a camp there and they had a victory garden. And I was like, "Oh, my God, a victory garden, culinary and gardening and history." It just really inspired me to bring this about. If you ever go to Cape Cod, you have to go to Capabilities. It is an incredible farm. It is run only by special ed members of the community and it's a spectacular project that they have there. Phase two is where we're going? Well, this was the grant. Do you want to talk about the grant?
So, we applied for a grant through the School-Based Health Alliance and the project goals really were about more than gardening. They were about ways that we can use gardening as a tool to support the physical and mental health of our students. So, we worked with our school-based health centers in the high school and they worked as community partners, talking about the different ways that they can use the garden. So, we're hoping that there will be like a therapeutic garden that's part of the greenhouse garden area where they can go outside and do group meetings or take groups out there to pick flowers or pick fruit or vegetables while they're working through some of their emotional difficulties. And we were very lucky to be fully funded with the project. We never thought that we were going to get all of what we were asking for and so we felt very blessed when that came through. And that really just kicked off a lot of hard work. So, these are the beginning stages of what the site looked like when we kind of broke ground. So, this is right after the playscape was removed and we started to get things ready. And this was in early March. It was still cold. And these are just some pictures as we went through. We had no idea how big the greenhouse really was until they framed it and we started looking out our window and we're like, "Oh, my God, this thing is enormous." Which was really exciting because I think that was the point at which you guys could really start to see what the capacity was going to be.
And I'd just like to say, you know, I know that Heather said that, you know, I reach out to the community, but it's not only the community. Something like this doesn't happen unless you have the support of the people in the school. And there's many people sitting right here, all along the way, all the way back to Mr. Dinozzo, who have been, I mean, I'm always the kind of person who will beg for forgiveness before asking permission and they have been 100% behind us, backing us. I came from, Mr. Swan picked me off at, from Platt Tech and not bashing Platt Tech, but you know what? The answer was always no. The answer was always no there. No, you can't do that. You can't do that. You can't do that. And that's not what happens here and that's just really a testament to the superintendent's office and our leader, Mr. Dinozzo and Mrs. Velius, who got us through this grant. It was amazing how, I mean, I just can't believe that we applied for the grant December. We got the money and we were approved in the middle of December. We got the money in January and we were almost built by the end of March. So, it's amazing and, you know, I just want to thank you and all of you. So, the best is yet to come here.
What's left?
These are just some notes from some of the kids that have worked through the program already and are talking about some of the things they're excited about. So, we can share this with you. But you want to just talk about the things that are to come?
Sure. So, I kind of touched on it briefly on our cutting garden. There's a big new movement for flower gardens and farm markets, having the kids grow their own food and their own vegetables. Everybody's kind of gone back to the old ways, the ways that I was raised. It's kind of nice to see that full circle come around, organic and fresh and grow your own, crowd share. Everybody wants chickens now because of the price of eggs. So, like everybody wants to have chickens, so that'll be coming soon. Six chickens? We're actually going to, we're actually going to Lyman Hall at the end of the month and we're going to look at their program. Their culinary program grows their own fish. They grow tilapia fish and aquaculture. So, that's been a little bit of discussion. There's been some soil testing. I'll slow it down. I'll slow it down. I'll slow it down. There's been some soil testing that's been ongoing up in the science department. They came and they took some tests and they've taken some more tests. There's been talk about some memorial gardening being done, rainwater collection, which I don't know if you know, this building doesn't have outside gutters and downspouts. So, that's going to be a real challenge for engineering in the school to come up with another way to collect and harvest rainwater. But we're going to figure it out and we'll do that to cut back on some of the costs. There's been some talk about signs in different multi-language's being created down in manufacturing, being translated by different classes so that if you go out there and you see a strawberry, somebody else knows what it is in Spanish and French and Turkish. I guess we need to write a sign in Turkish. I didn't know we needed that one. But the ideas are, it's endless, you know? The possibilities that can go on.
You have to find the signs between soil.
Yes, soil testings. Yep, they did soil testing last week. I haven't seen those results yet. Yeah, I mean, hello, this is just like, I mean, we're going to miss somebody. I know we missed somebody on this. That's why I can't stand thanking people because I always feel like I miss somebody. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. But I mean, really, like Lance Horton and his team, they really went for it with us. You know, RJ was like our project manager. Tracy, she's not even here. She's behind the scenes. I think Tracy's probably one of the most underrated staff members in the school because if you can't get it done, Tracy can. The CTE department has really chimed in. You know, John talked about Mr. Dinozzo. Ms. Robinson, she was there with us putting this presentation together. She's been cheerleading. I don't see your name on here. I don't see your name on here. There's a lot of people that are on here. So, and all of you, I mean, obviously, you've been behind us as well and will continue to be there, we hope, for support. I can't tell you how much excitement this project brings me and I'm just so grateful that we were able to get this grant because there's no way we would have done this without this money. And it's going to, it's really going to make an impact on students and I can't, I can't wait for you to see it all the way through.
Thanks. All right. So, now we're going to invite Chrissy Adanti-Petersen and Bryce and who else do you have with you? Emily? Come on, Bryce.
Hi, Bryce.
This is going to be embarrassing. Come on, Bryce.
You're good.
I got to find your slide deck.
Dusty?
This is all right. All right. Hello, my name is Bryce. I'm one of the kids that work on, in the transition program. I have my coworker here, Emily, today that we're going to talk about the exceptional blooms and more.
While Bryce kind of collects himself and gets ready to do his awesome presentation with Emily. So, I'm Chrissy Adanti-Petersen. I am the special education teacher in the transition program. I started here last year and I have been on 1,000 since I got here and I am loving every minute of it. We are now, we have evolved from exceptional entrepreneurs to exceptional blooms and more and that is our small business for our transition program. It started as just making flower arrangements last year with artificial flowers on a very small scale and it has evolved into a floral club for all the staff in the building. And we just made 10 boutonnieres and 10 corsages for the adult ed prom as a donation from our program. So, this will be ever-evolving, but just to kind of give you an idea of what we are all about and what I am doing with the students and like Heather, you kind of give me an idea, ask me, yes, I will do it and I will do it till I can't do it anymore and if it's not working, I'll figure out another way. So, I don't have kind of an off switch, which is great.
I can read if you want me to.
You can. I know. I'll have you read it. So, it's been a good kind of melding of great minds and my students are flourishing. And as you see this presentation, you will see what has started from last year to this year. And I think a lot of the staff in the building can attest to how much of a difference just something like this has made for my students and it will be for students to come from preschool all the way up to the transition program.
Okay. So, okay. Exceptional Blooms and More is a student-run business created by our students in the special education transition program, is designed to develop exceptional vocational communities and life skills through a hand-on experience through the inter entrepreneurship, sorry. The project centers around a floral club where staff can purchase membership to receive custom floral arrangement prepared by our student team. The staff will receive floral arrangement five times throughout the school year. Students, every athlete of the floral club.
So, with that, we kind of have done other things with the culinary program. If they had breakfast for a function, the students have made different things. We have done some stuff for the Board of Ed and we also did two different projects for the drama club this year.
We worked at the Fall Festival, visit offices throughout the building during the holiday to promote gift ideas and take orders. And we made lip bombs and candles throughout, you know, the school year. And we answered phone calls originally, taking originally where they managed deliveries. I wrote them down.
So, with all of this, the skills that we will be working on, this is our vision for where we're starting today with the greenhouse and where we'll be going next year and years to come.
Vocational training, gardening, hot, water, horticulture, product development. Students will learn about planting seeds and seedlings. One can properly mount a future plant. We need to do the long visual schedule. Sorry. Using cutting tools, rinsing, watering cans, leaving plants, reading, learning about the difference between a plant and weed, harvesting produce, when ripe and proper to fruits. Transplanting, seedlings into soil or pots, composting, composting, filling and arranging planters. I'm really good at spreadsheets. Document creation and marketing materials.
So, Emily is our spreadsheet wizard. So, she keeps track of all of our inventory and she does all of our orders on spreadsheets. So, we are very fortunate that this is one of her skillsets that she loves to do, right?
So, these are our current jobs that we have in our transition program so far.
We worked at the fall festival, visit offices throughout the building during the holiday to promote gift ideas and take orders and we made lip bombs and candles throughout, you know, the school year and we answer phone calls originally, taking originally where they manage deliveries.
So with all of this, the skills that we will be working on, this is our vision for where we're starting today with the greenhouse and where we'll be going next year and years to come.
Vocational training, haphazarding, hot, water, water culture, product development, students will learn about planting seeds and seedlings, one can properly mount a future thing, we need to do the long visual schedule, so using cutting tools, brings running cans, labeling plants, reading, learning about the difference between plant and weed, harvesting produce, when ripe and covered to fruits, transplanting, seedlings into soil or pots, composting, composting, filling and arranging planters. I'm really good at spreadsheets, document creation and marketing materials.
So Emily is our spreadsheet wizard, so she keeps track of all of our inventory and she does all of our orders on spreadsheets, so we are very fortunate that this is one of her skillsets that she loves to do, right?
So these are our current jobs that we have in our transition program so far, you know, as we are, so we have multimedia manager and multi, assistant multimedia manager and marketing crew, creating flowers, email announcement, oh, oh, my bad, we have order manager, inventory assistant, tracking orders, web designer. I've been working on the East Haven art website for a long while, I've been trying to get, keep updates with everyone around the school, you know, for our transition program, it's been a long road, but I've been managing it one by one, but it's been looking. So finalize is going to go live, also I came with business cards, I shall pass that if that's okay. Yeah.
So we have production and assembly, kids filling orders, flower design, product labeling and tag creation, then we have a crew that just does delivery and logistics, kids that go out and do the deliveries, also collecting the vases.
And we have our exceptional floral club member, whoever buys a flower from us will give them, get a membership and then we have some examples.
That.
Oh, my bad, I forgot one part, they, that gets hang outside your office once you buy it, so I recommend you guys get a flower from us. Then we have our flowers examples for different seasons, this is from St. Patrick's Day and then we have our Valentine's one, next one please, I got the handles. So we have our cart here with Valentine chocolate, flowers, tic-tac-toe and some other stuff that we made, then we have one of my other coworkers doing the cart as well with different stuff throughout the year, but we still have ours, or you know, pumpkin, we have our chocolates and all that, we also made snuffle mats during the year as well, is for your animal. So that's for our dogs and cats, for you pet lovers, you know, who are having a animal thing, you know. That was, that was our last year's work project. Oh, oops, can't, not keeping this, sorry for that, so how many of you have pet, dogs and cats with you guys? And, oh, how many dog lovers with me here today? Seriously? Maybe we could sell some of you some snuffle mats, what do you guys think?
Why didn't you let us know?
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Thumbs up.
Yeah. And then we have this, this is our plant sale that we did during the school year.
That was just last week.
Last week, my bad, my bad. So we also have our prom, prom corsages that we, boutonnieres that we were, you know, made for the adult ed prom and for students here, I made two here as showed right there, the blue ones, and then I have myself and my coworker checking the plants and making sure everything's okay and over here is our first sale. Do you guys have any questions or concerns? My bad, wrong one. And then we have another coworker here, kind of ribbon to make the, you know, the whole, the Halloween ribbon, made for Halloween. And then we have our business cards right here. Everyone has, go along with their job, you know, I keep saying, and then we have our veterans, you know, luncheon, we have the tic-tac-toe card, board, and then we have our red, white and blue flower arrangement with the American flag and I think that's pretty much it, do you guys have any questions or anything?
Great job.
All right, this is it.
Just the fact that Bryce got up here and did this kind of presentation and Emily got up here, that in and of itself is more than just us working, so it extends so much farther that I, I have no words to let you know that where these kids were, where Emily was, what I saw as a senior last year to where she is today, where Bryce was when I started last year and he didn't even want to look at me and he wanted me to be gone the first month of school to now, that's what this kind of stuff does, so thank you, I appreciate you guys supporting our program, supporting these kids and wait to see what they're going to do and the fact that it's here in this community, it's just going to keep thriving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We appreciate you guys coming to support us and hopefully you guys continue supporting us in your fair way, thank you for so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes Bryce, please, I'd love to see, thank you, well done, that was wonderful, good job Emily.
Great job, thank you.
Do you want to bring one back to me tomorrow and give this out, bring one to my, bring one to my office tomorrow, give it to the people who aren't here, yeah, and you can come to our office tomorrow and give us one.
Sorry. Yes, you do.
Thank you very much.
He was trying to sell during his presentation, he did a great job.
Not a problem.
Tia, I will let you take this.
I'm going to take it, I'm going to do it right now. That's okay, we'll screenshot them.
Can I take a picture of it? Let me take a picture.
Thank you, thank you very much to everybody who presented this evening, as you can see, it's a very exciting time.
It is.
It is.
Lisa, did you have anything further to add or?
Just checking.
Just checking, that was great, thank you. We're all, um, good?
Yeah, I would, I just wanted to also add that we had our teacher of the year celebration yesterday and I want to thank Tia and Michelle for coming and we honored three district teachers of the year, Nikki Ammarone from Joseph Malillo Middle School, Lauren Kundasta from Joseph Malillo Middle School and Gillian Jack from Tuttle School, they were all selected as East Haven teachers of the year and Lauren Kundasta was selected as the finalist who will represent the district at the state level teacher of the year competition and celebration, so we want to just congratulate them and it was wonderful to honor them yesterday. In addition, we had the opportunity to honor two para educators of the year, Lori Forcinelli from Ferrara School and Angela Catalano from Joseph Malillo Middle School, it was wonderful to also celebrate our para educators alongside our teachers for the amazing work that they do and Angela Catalano will be applying for the, the state level para educator award, the Auntie Murphy Award, so we're here to help them throughout that application process and give them any support that they require as they get their applications submitted, but a big congratulations to everyone, it's just so nice for two programs like this to exist where the support, the nominations come from their colleagues and their peers and it really does lift the district in many special ways, so congratulations and thank you again for attending.
It was a nice event.
It was very nice, very nice.
Okay, all right, so that brings us to acceptings of the meeting minutes from April 29th special meeting, so barring any revisions or objections, which no one has reached out.
I have a question, I don't see any minutes in the packet.
Are the minutes not in the packet?
They're not?
They're not? Oh, I guess, sorry about that. Are they in the digital packet?
What?
Did they go into the digital packet?
Let me see.
I saw, I could have been last.
Now that you say that, I didn't notice before, but you're right. Right.
Good job Jack, that was a test, you passed.
Let me see, let me look and see if electronically they're there.
That's what I'm looking at too now.
So the 4/29/25 special board of ed meetings are posted electronically.
Okay.
For the special meeting.
Did everyone want to wait then until they had a chance to review them?
I don't know, we should go.
Okay, all right, so we will accept the meeting minutes, that moves us to our audience of citizens portion of this evening, so I will ask if anyone here would like to speak tonight to come up to the podium, just introduce yourself with your name and your address.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Kelly Delucia and I'm currently the library aide at Mamawin School. To say I love my job, I'm going to get emotional, sorry, is an understatement, I love working with the students every day as well as being a part of the inner workings of Mamawin, but my love of my job isn't entirely why I'm here, I'm here to talk about the plan to eliminate all of the library aides except for the middle school and high school and the reason for that is because they work with the students every day. When I heard that, I was surprised, I know I'm not alone when I say elementary school library aides work with students daily as well, we see classes every day, we help them find books that will hopefully give them a love of reading and it's working, every time a student tells me about the book they are reading, I know that was minutes, if not hours, that student wasn't on his phone. And don't get me started on the book fair, the love of that book fair is unmatched, with in the last, in the two and a half years I have been here has raised close to, if not more than $10,000 in scholastic dollars, which was used to update our very outdated library, not to mention, but I will, the two donor choose projects, I submitted and brought in $2,000 supplies with a third one in the works. Being only part-time with only 15 hours a week with no benefits, it's almost a wash to have me here. At the end of the day, I know me coming here might not change anything, but I couldn't go out without letting you know what a disappointment it would be to the kids, they love the library and I would hate to make them wait till sixth grade to use one, by then it might be too late, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, 306 Fort Hill Road, New Haven, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Hey, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Where's Chris, did he leave already?
I'm here, I'll see him later.
Okay. Oh, all right, okay, so that concludes our audience of citizens portion of this evening then. Let's move on to new business, 6.1, discussion and possible action on the mid-management bargaining unit contract that we discussed earlier this evening, if, barring any clarifiers, I will ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the mid-management bargaining, bargaining unit contract.
Second.
All right then, any questions or comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Abstain.
Mr. Hennessy?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Abstain.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terrello?
No.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Five, five, five in favor, motion carries.
That brings us to 6.2, discussion and possible action on the approval of the registered behavior technician contract template, as discussed earlier, if there's no clarifiers, I'll ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the registered behavioral technician contract template.
Second.
Any questions or comments? No? Roll call vote.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Abstain.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terrello?
Abstain.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brings us to discussion and possible action on the approval of two occupational therapist personal contracts, as discussed earlier, if there's no clarifiers, I'll ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the two occupational therapist personnel contracts.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If not, roll call vote.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Abstain.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terrello?
Abstain.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Yeah, we reordered it.
Yeah, but I know that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So that, that brings us to 6.4, discussion and possible action on the approval of the board certified behavior analyst personnel contract.
I'll make a motion to.
Thank you Jack.
Approve the board certified behavior analyst personal contract.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Abstain.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terrello?
Abstain.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That brings us to 6.5, discussion and possible action on the adoption of new policy 514412, restorative practices response.
I will make a motion to approve new policy number 5144.12, restorative practices response.
I will second.
Any questions or comments? All right, roll call vote.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. DeLongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Terrello?
Yes.
Dr. Delucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So that brings us to discussion and possible action on the rental waiver request from New Haven Football Officials Association for six dates of use of room S106 of the high school, I know this is something that we, we've done before, but we're also not in the best position not to be looking to collect revenue, so I was wondering exactly how much would this generate if we, if they were to bid?
It's the field use too.
Yeah, that's the next one.
That's the second.
Let me pull up the policy.
Is it like one something?
An hour.
Is it an hour?
Our prices per hour.
I know we just re.
When we waive the expense, do they pay security?
Yes.
Well, no, the security's already here in the building.
Security's already here.
But we don't really have the luxury of.
Is that a room that's used during the day? Does this change anything with like the cleaning of the room for the next day or anything?
Also in the past, they would use the field first and they come and study film, so they study film and they go to prep the fields of, of the practice.
And those dates.
I'm trying to understand how it impacts the school day.
It's in the summer, it's over the summer.
It's $100 per hour for a classroom.
These are September, October, November, no?
No, there's dates in September.
The dates are September, October and November. September, October, and November are the dates in front of me.
So Septem-, in September, October, and November are dates for the classrooms.
Oh.
So that's, that's the first page. There's one, two in September, three in October, and one in November, for a total of six. For, you know, various hours, so it's, you know, I think it's $100 per hour, so that would be one, two. $800.
So, but they want-
And that's just for the classroom?
That's for the classroom.
And how about the field?
That's 6.3, right? Is that separate?
Yeah, no, I was just looking at the cost, like what is our cost?
The track is, sorry.
Sorry, what is, what is this program? What it, who's, who are they?
This is the football officials for the high school.
For the referees?
All the ref, all the referees in the high school.
Which are just tricked users.
Correct.
I'd like to make a comment. I spoke with the athletic director. This program has been going on since Norm DiMartino, the principal. So, you know, and, and we've already set a precedent by waiving for the football field for other groups. And this can only be to our benefit.
We did just redo our waiver.
I think that's my concern, is we get a lot of these requests to waive fees. And I think as a board, we need to really look at that and possibly make a policy like we did for donations. We have a policy-
We just approved our waiver-
For waiving, for waiving fees?
There's waiving fees in there. Request for waiver reduced estimated fee form does not automatically relieve the user, but there is a waiver request. This is the form. Yep.
Did we specify how, how we decide if we waive it or not?
There's fee specific, so it says activities related directly to district curricular programs or town of East Haven events, there's no rental fee or no associated costs. For official activities or governmental agencies, there's no fee or, you know, associated costs. Activities related to the district extracurricular programs, there's no fees. Activities of local nonprofit organizations, there's a 15% reduction fee. Activities of non-local nonprofit organizations, there's a 10% reduction. And activities of private for-profit in and out of town are subject to all rental fees and associated fees.
So this is nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit.
So the cost, Michelle just asked about what would the cost be? If the, to rent the field, it's $200 an hour. Based on the times they have here, if they're really only using it for one hour, it's about $1,400.
But they would get the 15%?
Right, so it would be the $800 for the room and the $1,400 with the 15% reduced fee.
Personally, I would say the only reason that I would be okay with waiving this is I think refs, umpires, and so forth is such a dwindling network of individuals. They, they go over, I'm sure, safety procedures, and it's, in turn, it's going to keep our students safe on the field. And they are going to obviously perform better when they're out there. I, I'm sure most of you have children in sports, so you can understand that, you know, that fall can really injure someone. So letting them utilize something like this to, I would hope, you know, learn their skill or learn things, how to prevent something, I think is very good. And I think it's good if they're, I mean, even if they're here, whatever, it's not here or there. But I think it's definitely, we get the bottom of the barrel a lot of time with some of people that come to officiate these games. So I think maybe building these networks of people, I-
I'm not even sure how they would generate funds. Bob, I know you're an official. Do you pay a fee, a yearly fee to be an official?
I do.
Yeah. But doesn't that go towards insurance and things like that for the organization? Yeah, so I don't even know how the organization would-
I think it would actually probably come back to us in what we pay per rep for our games.
That's-
Well, that goes right to the refs.
Could we negotiate a reduction in fees or something as compensation? Where, I mean, I don't, I don't know if there's some kind of contract where they get paid a certain amount, like it's a union.
We don't, we can't, we can't negotiate how much a rep is paid.
No.
That's set to us by the C I C.
Or is there other fees that we pay this organization that we could-
So we don't, this is an organization that provides a service in C I A C. C I A C provides the rate to us, and we pay through Arbiter Pay. And Arbiter Pay distributes the money to, to the reps. So my point was that they have to pay for this, they may increase what they're charging per school to us, to all schools. Arbiter and-
Because I don't know how they generate funds.
The 15% discount total for both components would be $1,870. Just as a frame of reference.
They've done this for years, past, you know, I understand that. And it's to better their skill level, right?
For refs that may be reffing East Haven football games.
We have P D, they have, this is their P D.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you've kind of alluded to.
Is there a reason they have a-
And it's mandatory for the officials to attend it.
And then for, for what it's worth, our athletic department is supporting this. The East Haven Athletic Department is supporting this.
And every school system really does benefit of-
So again, you would only be waiving a fee of $1,870 for both, with a 15% nonprofit discount.
Does the C I A C send these people here? Is this from their, them, or no?
No, it's C I A C, they, they take the price that we pay for games.
Okay.
This is their cutter. What's your official?
It's the Federation of Refs.
The Federation of Refs that provide the service to the C I A C. This is their annual training.
It's the New Haven Board, so it's the board that services our school. So I have a question. This is during the school day, though? They're going to need the field?
Seven to 8:00 PM. If you look at the rental form, that's okay. On the days during September, October, and November, it's either from 7:00 to 8:00 or 6:00 to 8:00. And then the use of the, the, sorry. Six to seven is the field, the use of the classroom.
Wasn't it through July and August last year, only summer dates?
It, the use of the field is July and August, yeah. But the classroom dates are during September, October, and November.
And that's probably where they're going to watch the, that's when they're going to come together.
Yeah, that's the movement.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Did somebody make a motion? And who seconded it?
I do.
Okay. Did I miss that? Sorry.
Yeah, we did a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I was just thinking, it was like, is someone going to make a motion?
I thought, I asked if someone did make a motion. Hi, I'm sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the rental waiver request from the New Haven Football Association, Officials Association for six states for the use of room S106 at East Haven High School.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
No.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. DeLucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brings us to 6.7, Discussion and Possible Action on the Rental Waiver Request from New Haven Football Officials Association for Seven Dates of Use of Varsity Football Field at E H H S, which we just discussed. I don't believe there's any other further point. Clarifiers, so I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the rental waiver request from New Haven Football Officials Association for seven dates of the use of the varsity football field at East Haven High School.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call vote.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
No.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torello?
Yes.
Dr. DeLucia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Brings us to 6.8, Discussion and Possible Action on the Rental Waiver Request from Army's Legacy Animal Rescue and Sanctuary for Use of the Parking Lot at E H H S on August 10th. Do we have that set, like, structure or pay structure for a parking lot? Like, is there a fee? What, do we have a fee structure for renting the parking lot?
We do have a fee. Nobody's ever rented it beyond our own police department for their car show and a bunch of truck that's happening this weekend. So this is the first of its kind. But they did, because they're a nonprofit, they sent this in with their request, so.
When did this request come in?
May 5th.
Well, this has been advertised as sponsored by East Haven High School for three months.
Yeah?
So we just got this, when it was received?
Yeah, it says receive by five.
It's been advertised online here, that it's here, for the last three months.
The only comment that I have is that I took it upon myself to contact the East Haven Police Department to make sure that this did not interfere with their show in any way, shape, or form. They have no problem with it. Being that this is in August, their show is in October.
Or is the theme park for a moment?
Yeah, so.
What is the plan? Like, what's happening that day?
Looking to have a car show in the parking lot to raise money for medical care for animals to get them ready for adoption. They said they do not need access to any buildings or facilities.
Are they providing porta potties?
Yeah, it shows we're having a dunk tank, food, raffles.
Food trucks, raffles.
So we do have our, I'm not, I was unaware of any of that.
It's on their app, social media.
I wasn't either until I got the packet and looked.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I, we do have language.
Giving away liquor.
We have, what?
What?
Dunk tank, the first few people.
So the only information we were, we were provided, and I didn't go searching online for any additional information, was what's included in your board packet.
But we do have a policy in all our contracts related to food trucks that if a food truck is coming on our premises, it needs to be licensed. We need proof of insurance and license before it's allowed up. If people are interested, we normally try to promote our students to have them use their food trucks to do so. But we do not have, whatever you guys are reading.
Annual card?
RJ, what's our liability? When there's something like this?
Time puts liability on them.
It does.
It says they have a certificate of insurance.
But it is a, it is a school campus. Those rules don't cease to exist on weekends.
Yeah.
I just know, like, our students do come to the grounds when school is not in session.
And they are here for practice.
Are we allowing animals to attend the event on school grounds?
Yeah, what if an animal, like, bites somebody? Like, are we liable for that? I don't. Does anyone know anything about this organization? I don't.
Nope, just the request came in.
They're just saying that, you know, they do a lot of, they are advertising that.
Maybe we don't have enough information. I don't know who that person might be. Maybe get a free bottle of wine.
We can have them come to the board.
What are our policies on animals?
Yeah, but do we lap pets up here?
I mean, people walk their dogs up here.
This event isn't until August, so you don't have, you don't have to take action tonight.
I think maybe, maybe just, maybe instead of table it and then-
Animals will be here because it's a town property.
Maybe get a bit more information, just, and then specify, maybe bring up the ad and just clarify what is and is not.
Yeah.
Allow.
We would have to clarify what the town, that part is allowed.
Maybe Animal Control knows.
Animal Control?
Maybe they know about the organization.
I would say we take no action?
Our ordinance has said that we can't have it.
Maybe get clarifiers.
But here, they advertise this.
Well, that's not on us.
No.
It's not until August. 9:30 to 3:30.
I mean, this is just an approval of a waiver, so who determine, who just accepts them even coming here? I mean, this is just approving the rental waivers, so how do we?
Correct. So we haven't discussed contract with them because of the money. So the normal process is somebody will call and ask if the venue is available. If it is, we will go to the next step of providing the quote. When we provided them the quote for the lot, they came back and said they're not a town, not the property. They'd like to ask for a waiver.
Do they qualify for waivers or not from town? I thought our policy-
This is in and out of town.
10%.
In and out of town.
At your discretion.
RJ, did you say the police department does pay, though, for their car show? Oh, I thought you said they pay.
Activities of non-local nonprofits, 10%.
$5 spectator free.
They're asking for it free.
They're asking for it for free.
Yeah.
Which is why it came here.
Well, that does-
Correct.
So that kind of stops our process of-
Moving forward with the contract.
Once they get the quote, then they get a copy of our contract which talks about legalities of the food trucks and liability and proof of insurance. That'll all happen once this answer is cleared up.
Got it.
So based on your action or inaction or table, we will go back and get more information.
We're already violating the policy we set with New Haven refs. We can't keep doing it.
Or if you say whatever you say, we will go back to them, communicate accordingly, and-
I think they probably assume as an East Haven resident, even though the nonprofit is not East Haven, I think because they are East Haven residents, that's why they, from reading what they wrote, so.
I could see the 10% discount.
So I think, I think, I think it's premature. I think they just have to have a conversation, maybe some vacation before coming back. And maybe they'll put in a different, a different waiver with more information and maybe guide their social media postings so that they could figure out a way to make it something that's act appropriate for them.
So I heard some questions that we'll follow up on, but I also think, based on what I was receiving in terms of information, there may be some associated fees. If they are having food and stuff, like garbage is, is a consideration. So we will have to also calculate some associated fees, which don't necessarily get waived.
And maybe about, again, clarification on the pets coming on the, on the campus?
Open to vehicles.
Says all pets allowed.
Pets allowed, yep.
Yeah.
Open to all vehicles of all, you know, ages, years, Jeep, motorcycles, et cetera. I don't, I don't care. Pets, that's kind of-
Have we ever done this before?
No.
No, this is a new one.
It's strongly, deeply ingrained in animal rescue, but, and, and the other hat, with being here for the school system, this isn't directly related to our students. So it raises a lot of concerns I have regarding our policy in place that we just put in place regarding.
And, and while not a lot of information that you discussed that was posted in the social media post was present here, like I said, if you're having food trucks, then garbage is a consideration. So there are going to be associated fees with maintenance and security and fees that they probably aren't even aware of. So we'll go back to them, we'll share some information, and then we'll, we'll bring it back if it's appropriate.
Yeah, the pets are definitely a problem, I think.
Yep.
And their liability to cover the dunk tank, I'm just curious.
If they were paying full rent, would you allow them to have that film here?
Uh, that's a great question.
Yeah, before you come to us, you ought to answer that question in your own mind.
The pets?
What was your question?
If they were paying-
If they were paying full rent, would they even allow it to happen?
Did that information come to you, RJ, that they were having food, like, when you were giving them a quote on the pricing?
Because like Jen said, we're only approving the waiver.
What information did they share with you?
That they wanted them a car show.
A car show. That was it. That was my impression, too.
And it turned into this.
That was, that was the request.
This is the first I'm seeing the flyer that mentioned alcohol and food trucks.
Whoa, alcohol. Was it really say that?
That's what they're saying.
They're giving away wine.
But when they made the inquiry, it was to bring cars to raise money.
No, I, I know.
So, you know, we have, we're working off the information we have.
No, that's what I'm saying. If that was, if that was known prior to alcohol.
I said it.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make it through, but the information we had was just cars.
All right.
So we're taking no action?
No action.
Do we take a motion to table it or anything?
No, just no action.
No action.
All right, that concludes our meeting for this evening. If anyone has any future agenda items, please let either myself or Erica know. Our next meeting will be May 27th.
I have a question. Have we done anything about these parking lots, the lines in the parking lot? It's getting ridiculous to try to figure out if you're in a space or not. Huh?
Probably going to be the suburbs.
All right.
That's a town job.
I know, I know.
He did it at the beginning. Were we adjourned? Did you say that?
Did you say adjourn?
Yeah.